Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call together this King George County Board of Supervisors Budget Work Session. And I'd also like to welcome our other elected officials that came out tonight from the school board. Thank you all for coming out. And we'd like to start off with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Granger?
Sir. Well, Lord, we just come before you humbly, we thank you. We thank you for wanting to have a relationship with us in the first place and bridging the gap of our sin and making it possible so that we could be in relationship with you, Lord. Thank you for that opportunity and the care you show us, especially to be with us this evening, watch over us, protect us, provide us with wisdom and guidance, help us to make good decisions, and just in the best course for this county, for the citizens, for the students, and just have good civil discourse for them. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to open the floor up now for public comment. If there's anybody here for public comment, they can come up and please state your name and address, and you would get three minutes. Anyone for public comment tonight? Being none, Mr. Dines, anyone online?
Okay.
Okay. Anybody have any correspondence to be read or emails? Nope? Okay, thank you. Quick public comment, that'll be the end of that. Dr. Benson, you're up.
Is this for me, or you want? I appreciate greatly the opportunity to come before you on behalf of our school board, our staff, and our students and families to present a proposal for next fiscal year. Tonight, I'm actually going to share duties with Dr. Boyd. Dr. Boyd is our somewhat newly appointed, I guess, Deputy Superintendent, and so I've asked him to come along specifically. He's going to talk to you about positions that are proposed that need to be added to our budget for next year. So I wanted to start by talking about our budget process because we really begin this process in November. We solicit input from our staff and, my apologies, members of the committee that are here, I'm sorry. Welcome, I'm sorry, I didn't acknowledge you in my introductory remarks. I appreciate you listening to this as well. This is a process that we go through, and one part of that process, an important part, is that we solicit input generally from our staff. We do this because we want, it's for two reasons. One, we want to gauge how effective we were in budgeting for the previous fiscal year. And then we also want to make sure that we're continuously improving our budgeting process and the requests that we make for the year coming. We want to be good stewards of our taxpayers' money. We know there's a finite amount of money to go around, and we certainly want to put it to the good use of educating our students. So with that said, I want to share with you very quickly the results we got from this year's survey, because again, we use this to gauge how effective we were. First, to make sure you have a little context, as far as participation, we generally have a good spread as far as the participants. They come from different aspects of our school division. We have employees who are teachers, who are licensed professionals. We also have employees who are parent professionals, administrators, counselors, transportation employees, from all walks of life within our school division. So we feel good about the sampling we get as far as the response rate. And this is the number, we have approximately 650 or so. So, you know, we're a little more than a third of a response rate, which, you know, we view as fairly positive. But we're pleased that we get a cross sampling of employees to participate in this survey each year. First question we ask is about equipment. And you see there on the left, and I believe you have a booklet, I delivered them yesterday, hopefully you have a booklet, have these in hard copy for you, but that's the prompt there on the left, and then we ask them to rate against the four gradations there as far as the Likert scale. And you'll see that in this case, I believe we were eighty, eighty-eight or so, a little bit, eighty-seven, eighty percent agreed or strongly agreed they had the equipment necessary. I'll say in advance, not to be a spoiler, but this was our lowest agree or disagree rate. And so equipment was an area where we want to improve. We, with each of these questions, we ask respondents, if they said they disagree or strongly disagree, please provide us some commentary or specific as to why. All those comments then are collected and then dispersed across principals, department heads, to make sure that we can look at their input and do better by them for the next year. Supplies, same question. In this case, we were up near ninety-five, ninety-six percent agreed or strongly agreed. So we felt good that we were providing the supplies necessary. And then programs and services is another area. We asked them how they believe, how well they were equipped with programs and services. And again, this was very strong, again, ninety-five percent or so agreeing or strongly agreeing. So generally, we felt good about the survey response this year. However, we still then collect and share with each other the commentary we get back because again, we want to, you know, dollars are tough to come by, we understand that. You know, we want to make sure that we are purposing those dollars specifically to the needs that are at hand in our school division. So with that said, our budgeting process is really a zero base. When it comes to staff, you know, the non-personnel costs, we really build from scratch, and I'm going to share with you in a second, the Budget Builder, which is a document or user, really a spreadsheet we use collaboratively to build the stuff part of our budget, the non-personnel part of our budget. I share this with you, I know many of you are veterans to this, and so you've seen this before, but I wanted to share it also with our community because we post this online so that our community can account for every penny that we are proposing to spend next year. We simply don't roll up a number and add a percent to it and say that's the departmental budget. We go through and we plan the expenditures as specifically as we can so that everyone can see how we are utilizing those taxpayer funds. So I want to first talk about revenue this year, and we're in a bit of a unique position. Normally, I come to you each year, we have a fairly refined revenue number as a result of the state budget, either being with the governor or being in the process of being approved. We don't have that this year. As we all know, the General Assembly continues their debate in terms of trying to resolve conflicts between the state, or the Senate rather, and the House budget bills. And so what I've done for you this evening is I have tried to forecast or give you a table that gives you the projected revenue for King George County schools based on the House and the Senate bills, because those are the most recent and that's the most current information we have. Know that eventually that conference is going to come to a compromise. They will put forth a budget bill, a unified bill, to the governor for his consideration. And so we're in a unique situation this year, I guess. We just kind of have to stay in tune with what's going on in Richmond and then count on you all to adjust accordingly, or I'm happy to come back and update the revenue number for you once we have some resolution in Richmond as far as the state budget. So you see they're going across the first row, fiscal year twenty-two, which is our current school year, the amount of state revenue that we will collect. And then basically year twenty-three, you'll see the House and the Senate amounts, the House being thirty-one point four million, the Senate being thirty-four point six million. So almost two million apart, which is a big gap, you know, compared to where they usually are each year. I put a couple of asterisks by that Senate number, and if you go down below, you'll see that that includes two point four for what's called school construction. This is something new that I've not seen in our calculation sheet. My understanding is it would be funds that are dedicated per school division, they could be utilized for either new renovations, new construction, or they could be applied to recently completed construction, so bond payments or debt service on recently completed construction. So that's an interesting concept. If it were baked in, so to speak, or we knew that it was going to be continuous into the out years, then certainly it would be, I'd be more comfortable making a recommendation as to how to purpose that money, but I'd look cautiously at that money. And again, we'll have to see if it survives in concept, the budgeting process downtown. But all that to say, that two point four million, I look at distinctly as kind of one-time funding or, you know, not funding that's attached to SOQs that would be part of a future re-bench marking. So I'd be very hesitant to use it for recurring costs such as personnel. Just a note there. Again, we'll see what transpires here in the next couple of weeks at the General Assembly. And then finally, I have outlined for you just what we project as far as federal funds. In your binders, there's a document called Revenues, and it gives a paragraph or two and describes these different categories of revenue. It's a tab unto itself, so I hope that provides background information about where these revenues come from for the school budget. And it's a unique budget, you know, with so many different sources of revenue to come together, it is unique in that respect. And I just wanted to make sure that you and our community have access to see the different types of revenue that are collected each year and then utilized to provide educational services for our students. So ultimately, at the bottom then, you'll see the news, I'll just say, that for FY22, if you recall, the Board of Supervisors here appropriated eighteen million, a flat amount of eighteen million. If the House budget bill, again, were in and of itself adopted as the budget, which is unlikely, there are going to be compromises, but just for the sake of conversation, if the House budget bill were to pass, that would mean twenty-three million five seventy-eight would be required locally to make our budget work as presented, and then on the Senate side, twenty million, twenty point four million would be needed locally to make our budget work as presented. And then out to the right there, I just put the difference, one being five point five million and the other being two point four, in terms of new local money that would be needed to make the school division budget whole. And I'm going to get into more specific as to where those costs, those additional costs can be connected, or the reason for those additional costs here in just a second. Again, keep in mind that Senate version has that two point four in construction, so it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison, those two budget bills, because that's a good bit of money included in the Senate bill that's not there in the House. Okay, so major differences from this current year to FY23, right off the bat is compensation. The state at the, on the House side is proposing a four percent increase for teachers. On the Senate side, they're proposing a five percent increase. So right now, the school division's budget proposal does include a five percent flat that includes a step. It's not in addition to a step, but a five percent flat employee increase. We've not limited this to teachers. Traditionally, we've, if we've done it for one employee group, we've done it for all employee groups. So we've carried that five percent increase for employees across the board. As you know, inflation is very real. We have inflated costs of living, we have inflated costs, you'll see here in a second, as far as, you know, services. And so that's really the basis for wanting to compensate our employees in a way that is consistent with what the state is proposing, but also makes a difference for them, or at least keeps their spending power equal to what it was in the current year, given the projections as far as inflation. Second, we do have a slight health insurance premium increase. We were pleased, relatively so, to get back the new proposal and only opened the envelope and find that there were, there was a four percent increase. So we all know with healthcare costs, oftentimes that can be a double-digit increase from one year to another. So that was relatively good news. That insurance premium increase is in the amount of one hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars. Equipment, services, and supplies. So I want to talk about this, that we certainly have increases or projected increases in costs. You can think right off the top of your head, fuel costs for school buses, inflated costs for supplies and for equipment, and costs that are increasing for utilities, those types of things. But I don't want to just leave it at that description, and that's why we provide you the detail that we provide in that notebook. So I wanted you to look quickly, if I could, there's a tab called Budget Book in your notebooks. And this is really the master document. This document contains all of our personnel costs, all of our fringe costs, all of our supplies and our consumable costs are in that document. But it's lengthy, and it's difficult to go through simply because of the format it's in. So what we have done for years is we have created a separate document, and that is a different tab in your book called the Budget Builder. And if you turn to that, you'll see that that begins with a summary of each of the appropriation units or appropriation areas. If you kindly flip through it, there will be a sheet that says technology. I think it's the first detail sheet, and it'll say technology. So it's after the summary, you'll come to a sheet that says technology. And the first thing you notice is out to the left, there are codes, there are multi-number codes. And those codes then correspond to the very same codes in the budget book. And so the example I'd say is if you look at the sixty-eight one hundred, this is after the four two fifty, but the sixty-eight one hundred sixteen twenty nine ninety, you'll see a breakdown. This is in the Budget Builder. Underneath of that, you'll see the title, which corresponds to the title in the budget book, but then you'll also see in great detail all the planned expenditures for that. So I didn't, I don't want to ever come in and just leave you with a budget book, and then you have an aggregate amount. That amount then is burst out into detail for you and for our citizens to see in terms of proposed expenditures. Okay. So while I speak about it in summary tonight, my hope is that if there are follow-up questions about any proposed expenditure, all that information is there for you to look at and see as to how that number in the aggregate was developed. Okay, so just real quickly to recap, we've got three point seven in new compensation proposed costs. Again, this corresponds to the Senate's proposal as far as a five percent increase. We certainly want to maintain a competitive compensation, level of compensation for our employees, not just our existing employees, to keep them, but for new employees when we have vacancies. We want to be able to compete. I've also included in your notebooks a new document this year, in the last tab, I think you have, fresh off the month or so ago, you have our next iteration of our strategic plan. And so this should give you some background information about where we hope to head, and certainly included in that is a want to remain competitive and to make sure that we have quality people working, quality staff, and the very best that we can get, working with our children. So you'll see the alignment between our budget priorities, the budget increases, and then strategies and aims that we have that are associated with our strategic plan. With that said, I want to use that to segue to staffing, and for that, I'm going to ask Dr. Boyd to come up and kind of take you through the next slide where the new positions proposed are outlined.
Good evening, Chairman Stonehill, members of the board, Citizen Committee, thank you guys very much for taking the time out of your busy schedules to listen to the needs that we have for the children of King George County this evening. Thank you. So quickly, going through some of the positions we need, Dr. Benson has done a very good job of systematically requesting this information from principals, department chairs, and what I'm going to present here in this slide is the needs that we feel we need based on the number of students we have next year and the complexity of the needs that those students bring to our school division. So at the top, if you take a look, you'll see, beginning with King George High School, we'd be in need of four teachers right now. In those four departments, about sixty-three percent of the classes are above twenty-seven students in a class, twenty-seven desks. So if you've been in the high school before, that, it's getting tight in some of those classrooms. That includes our English department, the SOQ for English is twenty-four to one, and so we're pushing above that number as far as the average is concerned, so additional teachers there would be extremely helpful. Our current enrollment at the high school is one thousand four hundred and seventy students. In my six years, I think when I started, I remember it specifically, the enrollment at the high school was one thousand two hundred and thirty-four. So we've got a large number of students coming through the high school right now, and we're in need of those instructional positions. Many of you guys have probably heard about our prom this past week. We have seven hundred and fifteen students that need to go to the prom this year. So that's not probably, that is the most number of students that probably have ever needed to go to a prom in King George County. So we've got a large number of students. Right now, at King George Middle School, with the addition of the sixth grade and the addition of the number of activities, we're requesting an additional AD or an increase of the AD stipend there. At the elementary school, they're requesting three reading teachers to address the needs that have been met, or not met, but the needs that have come from COVID and many of the deficits that we see on the elementary level in reading for our students. The greeters that currently exist at the heist at the elementary schools, as you guys know, if you've been to the elementary schools, when you come in, you see the greeters, they've been there for years now, ever since really Sandy Hook, and they serve a number of roles at the high school, not only welcoming, but really the first line of defense at the high school. We've had them employed at the high school and really working on a temporary basis. We'd like to make them permanent and part of our staff, and that's that inclusion there. Sealeston Elementary School is requesting one general education teacher. Right now, at Sealeston Elementary School, on the third grade level, their average projected for next year is twenty-five point eight students on the third grade level, which is above the twenty-four point one required ratio. So in addition of one elementary school teacher at Sealeston, we'd drop that ratio below the required twenty-four to one. For the special student services positions, the next five positions there, those are our special education needs. Those needs are driven by student need. With the addition of additional special education students and the needs of those special education students, these services and these needs are IEP-driven. So as a result of the needs that are expressed in those students' IEPs, those are the needs we need as far as our special student services are concerned. Down to the CTE Coordinator, CTE is a hot topic right now, not only in our county but everywhere, career and technical education, and the need for expanding opportunities for our students to enter the workforce and to have as many career and technical education experiences and opportunities as possible. The CTE Coordinator would provide a conduit for growing those experiences for our students and growing the program and growing the number of classes, internships, and things of that nature for our students at the high school and the middle school. The Division-Wide Social Emotional Learning Coach is a grant-funded position right now that relatively small amount of money makes up the difference between the salary and what is provided through the grant. This position really is a position that's going to address the social emotional needs of our students. Coming off of our COVID experience and spending a really eighteen months for our students in isolation, as they've come back to school, we've really begun to understand that they have a new set of needs, a different set of needs probably than any of us ever experienced in our educational travels. So we hope to use that position in order to create and grow a social emotional learning program that would address the needs of those students. Right now, we're working tentatively on a partnership with Northern Neck Technical Center. Again, this is a CTE opportunity, that's the point five or half-year or half-position teacher there for the Northern Neck Technical Center. It's a partnership that we're hoping to grow with that very well-established technical center down in the Northern Neck, and that program is a game design program that we would hope to grow in the future. Currently, in the division, we do not have a lead ITL, Instructional Technology Liaison, or an ESOL, English as a Second Language Head. So that, again, relatively small amount of money would be stipends to appoint somebody to oversee those programs as those populations grow in our county. For Student and Family Services, we have, we would request the, again, these are just contract adjustments for the counselors at the middle school to take their eleven-month contract and make it the lead a twelve-month contract, and then the ten-month counselor contract and eleven-month counselor contract. Again, the middle school now with the addition of the sixth grade is just a slightly smaller high school with all of the needs that those students bring to the building. So our counselors are really always working, and that extra month of time would certainly fill up fast with all the responsibilities that they currently have. Lead nurse position, with the increased requirements through VDH and the Department of Education, this individual would need that extra month of their contract as well to satisfy those needs. As far as facilities are concerned, we would request the addition of two maintenance technicians with the increased square footage of the middle school that we now have, which is a very good thing. And also, right now, our maintenance supervisor spends most of his day doing the jobs that the maintenance technicians could do. So we would like to put him back in the supervisor position so that we're more efficient and effective in the way that we address our maintenance needs, and that would help us with the addition of those two technicians. Lead building technician, again, this is technology. It's a surprise to nobody that there is an amazing increase in technology in our school buildings. Most of our students now are one-to-one, everyone has a Chromebook, and with all five schools, we currently have three building technicians. And you're talking about thousands and thousands of Chromebooks and thousands of technology needs, and they're jumping around right now, doing a wonderful job, but we hope to grow that team so that we can address the growing technology needs that we have in the school division. And then finally, Transportation is requesting two drivers and an extension of the dispatcher contract to include summer school, and the addition of one mechanic. Right now, not only in King George County, but everywhere, bus drivers are hard to come by, and as you know, many of those that work in the Transportation Office and our current mechanics drive routes almost daily, if not very often, they're driving routes. So with the addition of those positions, we could satisfy the needs that we have in transportation on getting our kids to and from school. The entirety of those positions requested is one point eight million. Thank you. Turn it back over to Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. So just a couple of things to try to summarize. This slide, we've put together for you annually. This breaks down that budget book that I referenced by appropriation unit, and again, for our public, these appropriation units are state-issued. And so we are accountable for expenditures across each of these, and we code all of our expenditures accordingly so that all the expenditures can be uploaded to the state, and then the state can, of course, aggregate them statewide for all school divisions. But it gives you a snapshot of the two fiscal years, the current one and the one proposed for next year, and the cost per appropriation unit. At the bottom then, I provide you, just in a different format, some of the very same information that was on the revenue slide, but you'll see this in terms of expenditures. You see that currently, for the current year, we have forty-eight point seven million in expenditures. We utilized eighteen million in local funding, which represented thirty-six point nine percent of that operating budget. That's for the current year. For next year, you see that for the very same operating budget, the cost has gone to fifty-five point seven million. According to the House bill, if that were enacted, the local funding needed there, that dollar amount would equate to forty-two point two percent as far as the locality, so a heavier burden on locality in that case. Conversely, if the Senate bill were adopted, and I say this with that same asterisk, that again, there's two point four million in the Senate bill that is school construction money, you know, a very unique aspect of their proposal for this year. But that would then require twenty point four million, which would represent thirty-six point six percent of our operating budget as proposed. One last point I want to make, because this is significant for us too, and I'm going to mention it here and then go to the next slide, but Virginia utilizes a cooperative approach to fund schools statewide. There's a portion that is funded by the state, and then there's an expectation there is a portion that is funded locally. And to And to make sure that they are distributing that local burden, if you will, equitably across the state, the state calculates each biennial, any biennial budget, for each biennium, they calculate a statistic known as a local composite index. This local composite index, or LCI, you may hear, is theoretically meant to represent the percentage of each dollar that should be borne locally. And they utilize, let me switch to this next slide here. To calculate that, on the left side, down at the bottom, they look at the true value of real property in a locality, and they weigh that 50% in calculating that statistic. They also look at the adjusted gross income of the locality. They give that 40% in terms of weighting. And lastly, they look at taxable retail sales, and they use 10% of that amount as part of the equation to calculate this LCI. Let me go back on one slide. At the bottom, you'll see that for the last two years, our local composite index has been .3703 there at the bottom. In other words, the state of Virginia says, King George, your local economy, your local capacity to fund schools is such that you should really be affording 37 cents on each dollar to make the local school budget whole. That's theoretically what that is meant to represent. For this next year, our LCI has increased to .38. So now the state is saying, and that's good news for our locality, means our locality has done well, property values have done well, taxable sales have done well, median income must have increased slightly in our locality. But because of that, then, our LCI has escalated to .38, meaning that, okay, King George, the expectation is that you would fund 38% or 38 cents on each dollar of the operating cost for your school division. So I point that out because it's an important, I don't think it's well-known, I think that, you know, we don't come here each year just saying, would you please? We're still, we're here to represent, you know, that, what we try to shoot for is that ballpark, you know, that 37%, whatever the LCI would predicate in terms of a funding request. So this year, I won't mind being, I'll be candid, you know, when the first draft came out and there was an amount that would be necessary locally to make it whole, I about fell out of my chair, as I'm sure you may, because over the years, I've learned that we're typically between 1.2, 1.9 million in new local money, and we, you know, you all have the arduous task of trying to prioritize from there. This year, of course, keep in mind, the state, anytime the state proposes an initiative such as a 5% increase in compensation, they are proposing the amount of, the number of dollars necessary to do that on just the specified positions in the SOQ, which are woefully short for everyone in terms of the positions that are actually needed to run a school division. And so, all that to say is that you all, then, as the locality, then, are put in a position where you have to make up the difference, and you know that very well, but I'm saying this for our public and for our community to understand that it's not simply just a decision you have to make, it's really an obligation balanced with a decision, competing, not competing, but additional needs in our community that you all are tasked with trying to fund. And so you're in a very difficult place, but I think it would be unfair to characterize your decision as simply a decision of what do you think? You know, you have to take into account that, you know, this, the schools are unique and that there is an expectation of each locality to participate in funding their school division, whether it be King George, or Baritat, or Fairfax, or anywhere else in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So I'll end with this, to frame it, on the right-hand side, I wanted to explain, in fiscal year '21, two years ago, the Board of Supervisors appropriated 17.5 million in local funding. That covered 37.9% of our operating budget for that fiscal year. Our LCI for that year, 37.09. You know, so right on. And last year, you appropriated 18 million, that was enough to cover 36.9 of our operating budget for FY '22. Our LCI, again, because it's every two years, was 30.3709. So if you, if you look at that logic, or you look at what we've done in the past, and you apply the same to the next biennium where our LCI is .38. The funding needed then to meet 38% of our FY '23 operating budget as presented is 21 million, 194, 106, or 3.1 million in new local funding. Now, I put that number, that's obviously different than the two I've presented previously as far as the House and Senate version, but I put that up there for your consideration because I know you have a difficult task ahead of you, and I think it's tough to frame, you know, the decision process or the factors you want to take into consideration to ensure that, that, you know, you're doing right by the schools, but you're also doing right by all the other services we need in our county. I recognize that, but if that helps, I just wanted to frame it so that you at least had a different comparison from previous years to see where your fiscal effort has been relatively, and certainly where we hope your, at a minimum, your fiscal effort would be for the coming school year. So I'll stop at that point. You know, I know you're early in your process, I don't expect you to have all your questions ready this evening. I know you've just had a short amount of time with the binder itself, but I'm certainly welcome or happy to come back, answer questions at a future time if you need, or, you know, email, any way you need questions answered, I'm happy to do that to help you understand, given this is a rather unique budget year. So thank you, Dr. Boyd, for your part, thank you, board members of the school board, for your attendance here, thank you, citizen committee members, for your attention, and thank you, members of the board supervisor, for your consideration in advance. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Questions?
Quite a few. First off, I was looking through the more specific budget builder, and textbooks, do we still get paper textbooks or, you know, bound textbooks? Or, I mean, my daughter does most of the stuff on the Chromebooks, so I was wondering if there's, you still do textbooks and have a subscription on the Chromebook, or do you actually get physical textbooks?
Both, both. We do have some hard copy textbooks that we adopt. We have a process for that, for citizens to review, what's, what teacher groups come together and decide is best for their classes, but we do utilize both types of resources.
Okay, I was just saying, and then for an attorney, do you bid that out, or is that, do you, or services? Because, you know, for the county, on the county level, we bid out, you know, the contracted services to see if we can get a better deal. Do you do that for your attorney?
No, we don't have an attorney necessarily. We have talked about or thought about, maybe we need a, you know, an attorney on retainer, specifically at the school board level, but other than that, we simply use attorneys that have expertise in the area of law that we may need for a certain situation. If it's a special education issue, then we'll look to a certain attorney for that, but we, you know, a knock on wood, we've not had that need very much, and so we've simply budgeted an amount that we use piecemeal to hire help in that respect.
That's why I asked, because in here I was wondering if it would be better to have one on standby, or just you don't have enough need for it as you go along? It's just piecemeal?
Yeah, I think generally the latter, but again, I think that we would be better served when we can, we can hire an attorney with expertise in a particular area if a dispute does arise, where we need that, let's say HR versus special education. We, we would, we would rather utilize someone with very specific special education experience.
Okay, next is, on your list of the new staff, are those all mandated, or are they based on needs that you have addressed in the community?
They are not mandated, they're based on needs that we've addressed. For instance, the CTE coordinator, you know, we've talked, I think both boards have talked about a want to try to expand CTE offerings. There's nothing in the SOQs that would predicate the hiring of a CTE coordinator, but we know from best practice, having visited other school divisions who have programs that we've looked to try to model, that's a need, we see that as a need, and again, I'm required to bring to you a budget of need, knowing that, again, you'll have decisions to make down the road. But not every position is SOQ-born, if that's what you're.
Yes. One of those specific positions, the SEL coordinator or coach in there, I noticed it had a grant. What is that position would cost if it was funded and then, you know, you have to now bear the responsibility when the grant goes away?
What was the position? If the grant were not there, that position would be the same as the other 10-month positions, the 79, 813, but because we have been awarded grant funding to offset the cost for one year, that's the residual amount. What's represented here is the residual amount that would be, need to be borne locally to make whole.
But once that grant is done, then you're on the hook for the whole amount, correct?
If we were to continue that position. I think the position is designed in a way that would help us to diagnose needs, you know, individual needs of students particularly, and to develop a plan by school as to how to address those needs, but to build capacity that we could move forward, you know, without that position in future years. So it's just a one-year position.
It's just one year, because there's different definitions for social emotional learning, so that's why I'm asking what exactly that position is, and is it something you would want on a more permanent basis or just setting it up?
Yeah, I mean, I say, I never say never, but I know that the plan right now is for that person, for that position to come in, help us diagnose, to help us develop a plan for addressing SEL needs in our division, and then we move on from there, however it may be.
Okay, let me just see if I had. Oh, for the CTE quarter, and I 100% agree with it, because when I used to sub in that, I heard from many students who wished there were more offerings. And what I was asking for the CTE coordinator, are they ready, if that position, you know, you were able to fund it, could that go roll right out and start to set up more programs? What is the designer, is it putting the cart before the horse?
Your last part threw me there.
Well, you know, you're ready to go if that was funded?
Yes, I think we've been talking about this for a number of years, and I think, I'm going to expand on what Dr. Boyd said. This is not, you know, I'd rather not wait for facilities to have to be built to offer new courses, so I want to kind of take you away from the paradigm that CTE offerings have to have be a course in the high school. You know, long-term, we may look at that, or look at partnering such as the Technical Center down in Warsaw, you know, we may look at those types of opportunities, but I'm really, the Louisa model leveraged external internship possibilities. They, they developed partners within their communities where, where facilities really in part already existed. You know, if you want to look at auto mechanics, for instance, you know, we were able to partner with, with a garage, with someone that already had the machinery, had the equipment that we could then utilize, you know, they gained because they gained a potential employee in a tough hiring environment, we gained because we can immediately offer that experience for that student or for those students without having to wait to build, you know, a two or three-bay garage onto the high school kind of thing.
So it's utilizing, coordinating with people in the community who would like to offer their services?
Correct.
Or a partnership, you know?
Not solely, I mean, certainly there's going to be, you know, administrative as far as matching students to opportunities, helping to guide students in terms of the different pathways we offer, I would envision that being part of it as well. But I think that's a part that would be unique, you know, not simply just an administrative employee, but really a liaison to many partners in our community to expand CTE experiences as we've talked about them here.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Benson, thank you for coming out, Dr. Boyd as well, thank you, and school board members, for your survey. So I appreciate the breakdown of the school participation and what percentage from each one was the respondents. Do you, just out of curiosity, do you, for like your equipment needs or your supply needs, do you have the information to know, hey, a particular school really disagreed, strongly disagreed with this, like that's where most of the people were at? Do you have that kind of granularity, and did you see anything like that, where you're like, hey, it seems like a particular school may be struggling with equipment needs or, or something like that?
It's a great question, and yes, we can, we don't know by name.
Yeah, fair enough.
But we do look, and we infer from those, from the commentary in particular, you know, we'll, we'll list and we'll cluster and label. It's also a shared document, the returns that come in with the commentary are shared with principals at localities, and so they can see specifically the commentary for their school, and that's typically where patterns will emerge. If, if one school is saying they need something and it's repeated like four or five times, absent at another school, we know we need to look a little closer at that.
Okay.
Try to budget for that need at that school.
Okay. The revenue summary, slide eight. We could go back just for everyone to see as well, I don't know if that would help on the. Okay, so the FY '23 Senate with the state revenue of 34,627,340, with the two asterisks at the bottom talking about the 2.4 million for school construction. So you're, to make your whole budget whole, based on what you say your needs are, you're saying 57 million. Does that 2 million earmarked for new construction and debt service, do you have things you could spend that on as part of the budget wholly, or is that, would you need more funds above, beyond and above that in order to actually make the 57 million? Like?
It's another great question, because really, I think that would be a decision this board and the school board would want to look at closely. Could you purpose, you know, if conceptually that survives? I don't know that it's going to survive.
Understood.
But if it does, you know, you could conceivably use the 2.4 million to make the payment on the debt service associated, you know, specifically, let's say for the middle school renovation, you know, and there is a line in our budget, it's in and out. We, Donna lets us know what that amount is each year, it's then just left there for Donna to make the payments when they have to do for the bond. You could conceivably, if it were five, you could conceivably utilize that money to pay that debt service. The funding you were going to use to pay that debt service, you could then repurpose within the school budget. My only caution there is, is that if you did so, and I'm speaking to both boards, even though three members are behind me, if you did so, you would want to be careful not to create a cliff, you know, where that money might not be there in the out years.
Okay.
Construction concept may disintegrate or go away, and suddenly you're left with that 2.4 million, or whatever it is in that next fiscal year to fill, to cover whatever you utilize the other funding for.
Tracking, yes. So as well as that 2.4 million considered, so I see there's no local match, is that in regards to like the LCI, is that what that's referring to for figuring out the local? So is it not really, when you look at the Senate budget, if it were, let's pretend the Senate budget came through wholly as it says with, with that 2.4 million, would the LCI be applied against the 34.6 million, or would it be against like 32.2 million because that, that's like a, a construction fee? What's that expectation? Do you know?
That's a good question. Because it's so new, I'd have to think about that, but just off the top of my head, I think that would be a distinct, you would not include that. I think that you would purpose that money for the purpose, because it's very direct what you could utilize it for.
Okay.
In fairness, you don't have any flexibility with that, you know, the.
And if you don't know the answer, that's okay, I was just, I was kind of curious to understand how that worked exactly.
Yes, in fairness to the question, I don't know that they utilize the LCI to distribute the school funding or the proposed amounts for school construction funding.
Okay. Thank you. On slide 10, I'm going, first I had a little note here. So I caught, Dr. Boyd said there's, currently there's 1,437 high school students, is that inaccurate? Okay. And so, and then you were, you were anticipating that you would need four new teachers at the high school, so I'm assuming it's based off, hey, we know, we have this number of seniors that are looking to exit, and we have this many number of eighth graders, and then there'll be some number of new students maybe moving in, and that, I appreciate that that's not something you can know definitively. Do you know what your anticipated high school population size is supposed to be next year? Like, because obviously you're basing that based on some estimate? Seventy, I'm sorry. I apologize, I never.
I don't know, off the top of my head, what that is coming in, but it's large.
Okay.
So we'll, I think we'll stay right around that number.
Okay. Okay, so you, you think it's either equivalent to or larger than this current senior population?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind running that to ground, just so I could know, I would be appreciative, yeah. So, but I appreciate you may not have that information here, so that's certainly reasonable. The special student services, so there are a number of new position requests, and I appreciate that those are IEP-driven, IEP. Are those anticipated for the coming, the next coming school year? Are those students that are currently in the system now, and they will have these needs going forward that they're not receiving, but they will need to receive? Just trying to understand that, that population.
It could be both.
Okay.
I won't speak to individual, we're getting down to almost individual students there.
No, no, I'm not looking for an individual, I'm just asking though, like, are these estimates based on, hey, we think we're going to have new students coming in, and that they will have needs, so we'll need these positions, or we've already identified, we know in our IEPs, we'll need these people, and if that's the case, how are you meeting those needs right now, I guess, if that is the case?
The latter is the case, you know, Dr. Bush.
Okay.
Special Ed, you know, she does a great job of tracking, you know, all IEPs, and we do, oftentimes we'll have early word, if we have a student who has unique needs and, you know, they may require a one-on-one person to help them navigate in school day, we'll usually get early communication about that in time enough to budget for that. Not always, though. So to answer your question fairly, sometimes, you know, we have students who relocate to our school division after the budget is adopted, and we have to find funds within the budget then to. after the budget is adopted and we have to find funds within the budget then to fulfill that staffing need for that student.
So that's what you're, that's how you'd be funding it currently is, is you have to find?
We do.
You have to eat it somehow, okay?
It's reprioritized within the budget to make sure we're meeting those needs.
Okay.
These are known needs that you have in front of you as of now.
These are known needs, like, hey, we actively know this is going to be needed for next year. Not, we're estimating because we, there's always going to be some added on.
Correct.
Okay.
And I think it's a, I'm glad you asked it because, you know, conceptually, you might look at our overall enrollment and you say, well, wait a minute, enrollment doesn't seem to be escalating at that quick a pace. But within the school division and within programs and services, we have more students who are being identified for needs within certain services.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all the questions I have at the moment. If I have more though, I will email you, but, and I appreciate it. So thank you so much and thank you for the binder, I really appreciate it.
Mrs. Kupka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming out this evening and presenting it. We appreciate your time. Thank you, school board members, for joining us to support your budget. We certainly appreciate that. Um, I did have just a few other questions that my colleagues haven't already touched on. Um, the bu, the bus drivers? I mean, do you think you'll be able to find the additional drivers that you need? I know the market is really tight and you said, y'all said yourselves that at times you have mechanics driving the routes.
Oftentimes.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I do believe, you know, we've been, um, hard at work. You know, a couple of weeks ago, we hosted on a Saturday morning, we had 40-some staff out to host a hiring fair of our very own here in King George across all employee groups. We conducted over 100 interviews, uh, offered several letters of intent for next year. So, you know, we're working hard to fill those positions. If we know that these positions will be there, we can certainly get to training people to get them situated in place for next year. But I'm confident, you know, we will continue to beat the drum and find people to fill positions because we have kids who had, have that need, who need to get to school. Um, and there's, you know, I'm, I'm proud of the fact that you've heard locally or regionally stories, horror stories of buses running hours late, you know? And while we may have had a tough day or two where we were late, generally we've been able to, um, you know, make it happen. And that's, that's a tribute to our staff, you know, our fleet of drivers and also to the mechanics and to the, you know, Valerie and her crew, three other people in our transportation office who often are picking up keys, leaving their normal post to get on a bus and run a sub route or something that needs to be done so that we can transport kids on time, both to and home.
Thank you. What is the hourly rate right now for bus drivers? Do you know off the top of your head?
Well, we have a scale, it depends on the number of years.
The tenor, yep.
But, um, I can get that for you, I can, I can get the scale.
If you could please, I'd like to see it.
All online, but not for next year, so.
Do you think you're competitive enough with that?
I do, I think it was a recognized need, um, of our school board. And in the fall, the school board did take time to then examine those, that scale and some other scales as well that, where we were behind. Uh, and they made a mid-year correction to those scales to make us more competitive.
Thank you. Um, and then in the budget builder, you have $400,000 allocated for fuel. Do you think, like, when did you come up with, how long ago did you come up with that number? And do you think that might need to be revisited? Or do you think that's a good estimate?
I, I mean, nobody has a crystal ball. We, we created it in February, updated a little bit in late February. You know, I think like everybody else, I'm a little happy that things of moderator seem to be not moving as rapidly as they were a few weeks ago. But, um, you know, we believe that would be sufficient. Um, if we find out that it's not, then we obviously would have to reprioritize within our budget as a whole. Uh, if for some reason things went crazy haywire, then we'd just have to come back to you all and say, hey, you know, nobody could anticipate this, but here's where we are, like everybody else. But I, I, I think it's sufficient for next year.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question with some of the, uh, recent grant funding that the school board accepted. Can you just give us examples of, I'll read the three categories, what kinds of programs or what kinds of services you'd be offering students that might qualify? And I certainly don't expect it to be an exhaustive list. But for summer learning program, would that be assumed to be summer school?
We, we have applied for and received a grant to support summer school, so yes. I want to make sure I'm talking with your.
So, well, I'm asking, so I'm also on the YMCA Board of Directors and we were informed at our last meeting, we're not able to do the Power Scholars Program this summer for the schools. And I'm not complaining by any means. It's my understanding it's because all three of your elementary schools are going to have summer school in them? Is that correct?
Not necessarily at each site, but we do have the augmented summer opportunity. And we did receive a grant to.
So you will be offering it to more students? Okay. Um, and then the next question, what is, what kinds of things would qualify for before and after-school programs?
When you say kinds of things?
Like, is that, is that supplemental instruction? Or how, how is that different from, say, our Parks and Rec Department offers a before and after care program?
Yeah, I don't know, you know, specifically the Parks and Rec program necessarily. But, um, certainly like what we're offering after school is supplemental instruction. You know, instruction that's designed to close that learning gap that we've experienced over the last couple of years in particular. Uh, but in general, we don't limit it to that. You know, any student that we feel needs supplemental services to kind of catch up or to be kept up, um, that's typically what those programs and the funding that we've utilized to fund those as far as ESER and those types of grants.
And then the last one is the unfinished learning?
Same.
Same?
Largely the same, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Collins?
Dr. Benson, Dr. Boyd, school board members, thanks for coming out. I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Benson and Dr. Boyd and everyone else for coming out. Um, I just had everybody else kind of hit on my questions before. Just a couple on the near new positions of like the elementary school and the greeters. Is that just three new ones or is that you're replacing people or?
Their positions, uh, right now we have, and since Handy Hook, we've had three people. Um, it, it has changed, you know, who over those years. But we have three persons who are employed temporarily, basically as substitutes, uh, to come each day and to perform the duties as greeters. So there's no, there's obviously no, no fringe benefits associated with that. But we have, it has become really a position we rely on as far as that instant accountability when somebody comes through the door. And so the, the rationale there is that for what, six years now? You know, we've, we've had these in place as a temporary position. We think the time has come to make these permanent positions in our schools. There's not a, not a new position per se, but new in the sense that it would be permanent.
It would be three new bodies.
Uh, it would be the existing three, the existing three, I don't want to say those people, but it'll be, it'll be three bodies that are already in three schools, being compensated differently. They wouldn't be compensated as substitutes, you know, long-term substitutes. They'd be compensated as employees, permanent employees.
Okay. Northernnet Career Technical Center. It's interesting we're having this conversation because on Sunday, I met one of those teachers. I had never heard of that place and he was with me and we had about an hour-long conversation about trying to get King George involved in that. And talked about transportation issues, about getting the bus down there and they only come up to Colonial Beach. Um, and I said it was a huge need. And they said they were actually in the process of working with King George about getting the folks to come down or getting them to Colonial Beach and hop in the Colonial Beach bus. I actually had scheduled a tour to go down there because like I said, I'd never even been there before. I'd never heard of it, but that's, that's certainly a great need.
It is, and I want to make clear, as Dr. Boyd said, that, you know, much like you've characterized it, we are in discussions. I don't know, you know, that may be an area that if it doesn't, uh, if we can't coordinate that for next year, then we'll continue to try to get it coordinated for the future. Um, but we didn't want to not include it and miss out on the opportunity if for some reason it does happen. Um, if it doesn't, then certainly we come back to you and say that would be a cost that for this FY23 could be, um, deleted. And then we would plan for it again in FY24 and continue the logistical talks. So all that to say, we're just kind of in a, we don't know yet, uh, stage as far as those discussions.
Uh, I think that's all I have. Um, citizens, questions?
Hi, I have a question. One of your first slides, you said that equipment needs was like one of the biggest needs by, according to the staff survey? And I was curious, you know, you asked them to list the needs. I was curious what some of those equipment needs were, just a few examples? And are they reflected in the binder here in the budget?
Yes, I'd be hard-pressed to kind of give you, it's a, you know, maybe 30, 40, um, items that were listed. So to rattle them off would be tough for me to do right now. I could certainly get you that, uh, that list so you could see. But to answer your second part, yes, you know, the reason we collect that information and then make that a shared document is that we want principals to see as they develop their budgets locally for me, as I work with staff to develop our centralized budget, um, we're taking into account those responses. You know, and I think that's, um, it's laborious and it's, it's a, it's more involved in terms of a budgeting process. But I think ultimately it yields a better budget, one that meets more needs. And that's why we, we take that, you know, we want to benchmark. And so I don't want to leave you with a misunderstanding. I don't think that's our worst area. I think that's, what I should have said was that, uh, that was the lowest percentage of staff we had responded, they either strongly agreed or agreed. But 88% is still pretty high, I think. Um, but that means there's 12% out there that we hope gave us commentary as to how we can raise that money so that next year when I come to you, that number is, exceeds 90 or is back up with, um, where the other two areas were. But again, if you'd like to see some of the, um, items that they communicated, I'm happy to get that to you. Okay.
Sorry. Uh, so my question is really kind of regarding, uh, the Chromebooks that you talked about. So inside your budget, does that include like a tech refresh plan? Where you're looking at the book, the Chromebooks that are, uh, I guess they're older and they need to be replaced?
Yes, is, is the answer. And we actually have, uh, an advisory, um, group to the board, Technology Advisory Council. And they meet periodically to then define needs that we include in our budget. One of those is obviously a, a schedule for refreshing technology as needed, a cycle, a six-year cycle for, we know these machines in six years are going to be kind of at the end of their useful life and we need to refresh those that, that are needed and we budget accordingly then. So we do have that kind of six-year refresh schedule, um, partially funded by, um, a state program. Were they a TP, TPSA, I think, or the, is the acronym? But to answer your question, yes, there is a process that we use to define which machines, how frequently they need to be refreshed, so we can anticipate those costs. You're welcome.
Nothing else? All right, thank you, Dr. Benson.
You're welcome, very much.
All right, up next we have Mr. Lau.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, nice to see you as always. I think up on the screen is our presentation. I've brought hard copy handouts. If, Mr. Dine, can you hand those out for me? Got it. Mr. Dine hands that out, again, nice to see everyone this evening. Knowing that it is indeed budget season and it's one of your budget workshops, what, uh, Mr. Miller and Donna had asked me to do was come and give a, what we call the preliminary capital funding analysis. So we'll for the moment stress that word preliminary. But as part of all of the planning that you're doing, that we're doing, um, with respect to the budget, and specifically this evening with respect to the capital side for the general funds. We obviously talked last week on the service authority. Nothing in here really is service authority specific with the exception of one graph that I'll show you just as a follow-up to last week. This is all really general fund, um, you know, call it general government supported. And so what we're hoping to do tonight is maybe just paint a picture. We know obviously the, the events of the world, um, have made this, uh, budget season maybe more complex than others. I think they're probably all complex, but given the impacts of inflation, um, the revaluation in terms of the, the county's underlying assessed values, you've got bigger variables moving this year than at least us as outsiders have seen, um, in past years. So we want to give you some of this perspective and try and do that relatively, you know, succinctly. Um, I suspect some of these numbers will be moving around and we can certainly amend and revise these as you work through the process. But I think where we start is just, we'll take a quick look here at the county's existing, what we call general government and schools debt profile. Um, and as you know, uh, having been on the board in the past and, uh, Mr. Collins probably remembers this from the middle school financing, King George has been blessed for many years, at least on the financial side, by virtue of your ability to pay for your debt service for all the various capital projects, whether that's schools, whether that's a courthouse, et cetera, um, with revenues from the landfill. Um, and that's been the case for a couple of decades now. It's worked out very well. Um, and so for years, we've really not had to be thinking in great detail about how does the capital program and our existing debt service fit into the general fund budget? Um, but as it were and as it may, uh, given the size of your needs and given, um, how the county has evolved, those landfill revenues have really largely been taken up and kind of spoken for, if you will, by virtue of, um, our existing investments in capital infrastructure. So I just paint that picture a little bit. Um, so on page number one, what you see is both the numbers and a graph, the existing, um, debt of the county. Again, not the utility, but the county. Um, it's about $84 million in total. Uh, what I'll point to, and I'll see if I can use a laser pointer here, but, um, if you look, our annual payments are right now about $7 million a year. And we've got a little bit of a downward slope into the future. That's there on purpose. Um, the county's debt operates much like a mortgage whereby it is fixed rate. It's paid in fixed annual installments. Um, it does not operate like a credit card, um, whereby, you know, you can kind of run the balance up and pay it down as you want. Our debt is very regimented, um, and very specific on purpose, um, so it's paid down responsibly. So right now, annual payments, about $7 million, starts to fall off as we get out into the, call it latter part of this fiscal year. Um, and it's really not until we get to 2035 or thereabouts, so 12 or 13 years from now, before there's any real serious decline in these, that existing debt service. So that's where we start. Am I going to point this a certain way? There we go, thank you. So as always, we're focused on a variety of things, but a couple of those are our debt policies and our debt ratios. You're in compliance with those. Um, you have those that are board adopted and have for many years. So those are one of our measurements and our benchmarks as we think about what the county can responsibly take on in terms of new projects. Um, those two specific policies, debt versus assessed value, debt service to expenditures, um, we review those annually. We're going to show you a picture what those look like on the next couple of pages. Um, but in essence, those serve as one form of governor, um, against making sure we've got a responsible and a reasonable amount of debt outstanding as we're making investments in capital infrastructure. So we tend to think about this as, as debt capacity, meaning how much can we do and still be responsible in the eyes of the rating agencies and our policies? In the next couple of pages, we'll talk about the other, uh, arguably in this season more important policy, not policy, but concept, which is debt affordability. Um, making sure we're in line with rating agencies, with responsible governance, that's one concept. The other, which really kind of fits in with the budget season is, okay, how are we going to pay for this stuff out of, uh, the annual budget? And so what we have in the next couple of pages is, uh, we call just a capital funding analysis, an update. You've seen this before. And we've taken a stab at, at sort of outlining a couple of projects. I suspect these numbers will change. They'll move around a little bit as you make certain decisions, as final costs for things come in. But we certainly want to make sure we painted a picture, knowing that it is budget season and all of these dollars need to be factored in to the overall operating budget. So the major capital projects that we've incorporated for the moment, and ultimately this is your decision, not ours. So these need to change or be amended. That's part of the reason we're here. But I think some of the primary, you know, call it front burner things that are being talked about. One is courthouse completion, where we see borrowed some dollars back in twenty twenty to get the courthouse going. As we understand that project, as many, many other major construction projects at local governments is just more expensive by virtue of the final bids coming in. You're not alone in that situation. We're seeing that across the board, across the region, the state, et cetera. Construction costs are just above and by a pretty substantial amount where they were even two years ago. So we have that kind of penciled in for the moment at about six million dollars. The radio system, we've talked a little bit about back in the December timeframe. We know that's a public safety priority, or I guess both of those are in terms of public safety priorities. We have that right now at eleven point eight million. Just round that off and call it about twelve million dollars on that. I understand that's a number that maybe is still being refined, but for order of magnitude, we have that piece in there. And then the third is a new fire station. We know that's been in the CIP for a number of years. I know there's multiple of them in there. But for purposes of this initial discussion, those are kind of what we started with. We've run two cases. If you can see the colors on the right-hand side. Case one just takes care of the courthouse and the radio. Just says, all right, if those are the only priorities, that's ultimately your decision as a board. But if those are the priorities, that's what case one takes a look at. It's about seventeen point eight million. Just round that up, call it about eighteen million dollars for those two projects. The second case takes those two projects, adds a fire station to it. So that's about twenty-eight million dollars in total. And we'll show you what both of those look like. Just for reference, other things that you, you have to pay for by virtue of your regional obligations, regional jail. Your contribution towards that, so I understand is a little more expensive than it's been in the past. That's about three hundred and ninety thousand. And so we have that factored in. And the last piece down at the bottom of that bullet point is annual cash funding of capital projects. So item number one is we'll call it the big stuff, the construction projects. Item number three are the things that by virtue of the fact that we already have a variety of buildings that are required to run the government. We have vehicles, whether it be sheriffs, deputies' vehicles, school buses, roofs, HVAC, all those kind of things that in a day-to-day and year-to-year way are, using my term, required to make sure you're maintaining your infrastructure. So those are the kind of things that it's better to be able to pay cash for than borrow. And so we've got a placeholder in there to make sure that you can take care of those into the future. We've used two point one million dollars. That's kind of an average of, of looking at your CIP, what those other needs were. That certainly can be amended and, and kind of worked with over time. We just kind of tried to take a, a summary, call it broad brush number to, to take a stab at it. So the next couple of pages, a bunch of assumptions that underlie all of this. And I'll try and go through them relatively quickly. Not a whole lot here has changed, but we'll talk through a couple. Number one is our landfill revenues. That again has been what we largely funded our capital with for multiple decades at this point. That's penciled in at about seven point three million for this fiscal year. Given some of the trends in that revenue stream, we've knocked that down to six point eight million going forward in this analysis and assume we have that revenue stream for about the next twenty years. So that's, that's the primary piece of the recurring revenues. We have the last year of the landfill expansion payments, about half a million dollars. Twenty twenty-three, as we understand, it's the final year for that. So we have that factored in. And then number three is revenues from real estate taxes. And again, given that we've largely used the landfill revenues, whether it's the recurring or the, the expansion payments. As you recall from when we did the courthouse financing, we're really in a position where we need to be thinking about revenues other than solely the courthouse to pay for recurring capital expenditures. So we're going to show, as we run these numbers, the relative impact to the real estate tax rate. We've used some estimates here in terms of what one penny on the real estate tax rate is going to generate by virtue of your reassessment, which we understand it values in the aggregate up about thirty, thirty-five percent. And so that value of what one penny generates is roughly speaking about thirty or thirty-five percent greater than if we were talking about this a couple of years ago. So that, in terms of the underlying value of your tax base, which is your primary revenue source, is the local government, is all your peers around here, at least counties, that underlying value is more valuable in a fairly substantial way than it was just a year or two ago. So that penny in the real estate tax rate generates nowadays, it was two seventy-five, it's now probably closer to about three hundred and ninety thousand plus or minus. That's the number we've used for purposes of planning purposes. And then item number four, right or wrong, we've assumed that the, the second portion of the ARPA dollars, call it that second tranche, to use a fancy term, is available for general capital projects. You can tell us in staff whether that's a good or bad assumption. We can pull that out. But we've made that assumption for purposes of running these numbers for discussion tonight. Just a couple of other critical assumptions. We know within the capital fund, the county has done a good job historically in maintaining good fund balances. The capital fund right now has about five point seven million in it. That, as we understand it, is, we'll call it available to help fund all these variety of needs. We've taken that into account to make sure that we can both cash fund and fully support the debt service of the county that may be existing and proposed. So as, as we're thinking through all the various variables, we've got the recurring revenue streams in terms of landfill revenues. We have the recurring revenue streams in terms of potential dollars, some real estate tax rate, that's up to you. But then we've also factored in, we'll call it the one-time dollars and tried to use that strategically over time to kind of fold some of these needs in. And so it's fully factored in. Last two bullet points matter less for the affordability side. They'll matter when it comes to the policies. We've made a couple of rough assumptions in terms of the size of the budget and the size of the tax base when we run those two policies, meaning debt service to expenditures and debt to assessed value. Because your tax base is so much larger, that actually helps your debt to assessed value ratio because your budget will likely be larger as well. By virtue of all these various decisions you'll make, the debt service to expenditure ratio gets a little bit more flexible that way. So we've made a couple of assumptions there. Okay, so we'll go to capital funding, call this case number one. So this basically takes care of the courthouse, the radio system, plus about two million dollars a year in cash-funded capital. So the first thing we'll show is what does it look like by virtue of borrowing that roughly eighteen million dollars to fund those two projects? Left-hand side of the page, you can see kind of the breakout there. Dark green bars is our existing debt service. The lighter green is the radio system that tends to have a somewhat shorter useful life. And so it tends to get paid back a little bit faster. For the moment, we've assumed that's about a fifteen-year payback. And then the courthouse, by virtue of being a brand-new building, it's going to be here for generations. Assume that, that's done over basically a twenty-five-year time period to basically line up with the prior financing for the courthouse. So the, the debt service payments would go from about seven million, if you can see the laser pointer up there, to a little bit over eight million, but over a couple of years. And that's part of, as we kind of work with these numbers, we'd think, probably in fairness, even more about is how do we phase this in over time, but wanted to give you a sense and a flavor for purposes of tonight. So from about seven million to about eight point three million. In terms of the two policies, what these graphs are showing are two debt policies, debt service to expenditures on the left-hand side, debt to assessed value on the right-hand side. In simple terms, as long as the bars on the bottom of the, the graph there are below kind of the yellow line and the red line, we're in compliance with the policies. And so we are in both cases. So from a capacity standpoint, from a rating agency standpoint, you have the capacity to do that roughly eighteen million dollars and have a little bit of excess up there as well. Debt service to expenditures tends to be the policy that we have a little bit less flexibility relative to. Debt to assessed value is not really a problem for us right now. And so we watch this one very, very closely. This works, it fits, and you'd even have some additional capacity thereafter. So then we get to the affordability side of things. And I recognize there are all kinds of tiny numbers on this page. And so I'll kind of walk through what this is doing. What this is really doing is, is layering our existing obligations, I mean, our existing debt service. And that's happening over here in A. We're adding to it the proposed or potential estimated new debt service. We're adding to it what we pay for the regional jail and getting to a total over here. So you add those up, it goes from about seven million to about eight and a half million over a couple of years by virtue of the regional jail being in there. We then compare that to our existing revenue sources, which is here in EF and G. So we've got six point eight million from landfill, our last year of the expansion payment from the landfill. So we understand that we've got a million two already in the budget for CIP expenditures. And so that is in there as a recurring revenue stream. And that gets us to the total revenues that we have to pay for those really debt service-related expenditures. You go over to column I, to the extent that the expenditures are greater than the revenues, then how many more dollars do we need to come up with? And that's what this column right here is doing. So how many more dollars in this scenario we need to come up with to fund the debt service component of the CIP? Ranges in at about a half a million dollars here. And then on the back end here, there's some, some dollars that once we kind of work through the numbers, those will really kind of go away. We then equate that to a penny on the real estate tax rate. And I say equate because we know, again, it's budget season. And so your primary revenue source is that real estate tax rate. You have other revenue sources available to you. But for purposes of discussion, that tends to be the revenue source that is easiest to kind of get our collective heads around in terms of, of what is the impact. And so over on the right, we, we start to layer in and say, all right, how many, how many dollars over and above what we already have budgeted would it take to fund all of this? And I'm going to skip to the bottom here. There's a whole bunch of numbers up here, but I'm going to skip to the bottom. It's basically about one point seven five million dollars a year. Would, would help to and would basically fund our existing debt service plus the roughly eight point, or excuse me, eighteen million of those two projects and the two point one million a year of cash-funded capital. So we need about a million eight a year over and above what we understand is, is in the budget to fully fund all those various things. And again, I would say that's a, a preliminary number. We would expect that during the next couple of months, as we talk through and get your input, get input from staff that may be revised, amended, et cetera. But we wanted to, to kind of frame for you what that looks like, given some, you know, early assumptions and analysis. Page number ten just shows how that capital fund is used. So I mentioned on the outset, we have five point seven million in there right now. And part of the strategy is to help use that over time to help pay for especially the cash-funded portion of the CIP, that two point one million dollars. What we've really done is we started with about five point seven. We put some ARPA dollars in it and then over time it gets spent down as, again, we take on those various needs. So the idea here is to make sure we've got a nice positive balance in that capital fund. This is not the general fund, unassigned fund balance. This is not the other reserves that we have that from a rating agents, rating agency perspective, we don't want to touch. And so these dollars are dollars that, over time, you've been able to, by virtue of running responsible budgets, have available to you. And we're trying to use those as smartly as we can as we think about the planning going forward. So important point here, this is not the unassigned fund balance. These are dollars that arguably are over and above what we need in order to demonstrate to the rating agencies and, you know, financial conditions in general, that we're doing a good, responsible job of running the local government. So then we go into case number two. So case number two is, I'm going to round off about twenty-eight million dollars. It simply takes the courthouse and the radio and adds the fire station to it. All again, estimated numbers at this point. So again, if we're right now at about seven million dollars, we go up closer to nine million over a couple of years. Again, using some initial planning assumptions. In terms of policies, we're still okay policy-wise. So capacity is, is, is fine right now. We're in compliance with those policies. The rating agents will be fine with those, to a very reasonable level. Anything under ten or twelve percent debt service to expenditures considered very strong. You hover in and around eight percent under these assumptions. I'm going to show you just one page and it's maybe a little bit of a tangent, but it falls out of our discussion last week in terms of the service authority and why it's important to make sure that that service authority is self-supporting because the only difference between this page, which is page number, looks like thirteen, and page number fourteen, is we've taken the existing service authority debts, the utility debt, which is right now self-supporting and fully pays for itself. And we've pretended for the moment as though it's not paying for itself. And it's getting support from the general fund and the tax revenues of the county not being paid for by the users of the system. And what happens, one of the impacts of if that were to be the case, is we end up with this, this green bar up here, that light green bar. What that light green bar really represents is the debt service payments of that service authority of the utility. But right now, we're not countered against the county's ability to take on projects, but if the service authority weren't self-supporting, it would be counted. And what you notice is that when you layer that light green bar on there, we suddenly are effectively out of capacity to do things for the general government. So a little bit of a tangent, admittedly, Mr. Chairman and others, but I just thought that'd be a useful picture to show based on our discussion last week in terms of why it's important to have that service authority be self-supporting to the general county as you think about public safety, school needs, et cetera. Okay, so we're back to one of the pages with a bunch of numbers. Same concept here. The only difference is we've added in the fire station on top of the courthouse and the radio. The dollars needed on a recurring basis goes to about two point three million to fund all of those various needs. And so I'd be happy to walk through any of the details here, but that really is in essence about where we are, order of magnitude. And again, expect these will be refined as some of these costs are known, as you make various budget decisions, et cetera. But I think we just want to make sure that as you're working through that process, you have this perspective, knowing that it'll be a busy next, you know, month or two months to get to that budget conclusion. And again, one more page, same concept. So with that, I'd be happy to just pause there, answer any questions, anything else that I can elaborate on. I certainly will do what I can.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions?
I have two questions. Thank you for your presentation. The first question I have is this is just adding on the debt, not refinancing. The first question I have is, this is just adding on the debt, not refinancing all of it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So this is just taking right on top of what we have already and adding either about 18 million or about 28 million to do those three projects.
So would it be still advantageous to, like we've done in the past, refinance it all and lump it together or not?
It's a good question, probably not. I think where we are right now in terms of interest rates, they've moved a lot in the last 30, 60 days. You've also been able to take advantage of that low-rate environment. So a lot of the refinancing that we did, and we're doing those projects in 2020, 2021, et cetera. Not saying that's gone forever, certainly, these things all have a long lead time. But in the shortest of runs, there's probably not much to do there, if anything, in terms of refinancing.
And then my last question is on the radio system. And Mr. Miller, you might be able to give me a little more information. Is that for all three phases together, that price? That includes the schools and the government and fire EMS and the sheriff's office?
That's correct. It was under 11 for the first phase. And then the other element included service authority and other parts of the county, and then also the schools.
And the schools. I just wanted to make sure that's for the public, that's the lump sum of the whole system. Yes? All right, thank you. That were my questions.
Mr. La, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for the presentation and the scenarios. As you said, the rates are in flux at the moment. What kind of rates did you use for estimating out the future?
Yeah, so we used anywhere in the 4% to 5% range. So I should probably qualify that. So where we were, when you think about, we borrowed for the courthouse, the middle school, was basically round numbers, all-time low interest rates. At various points in history, it may have been bouncing around there. So they are, interest rates now are certainly higher than they were then, but they're still historically attractive. So if we were to go out tomorrow and finance something in that range, it's probably in and around 3%, 4%. And so we've tried to use 4%, 5% in the plan.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the only two aspects that were factored into this analysis are, well, three, if you count the option B, the courthouse, radio system, and a new fire station, right? And so I just want to remind my colleagues, we have people here in the audience who have expressed in the past, and we don't have anything firm on that, but the likelihood of needing a new preschool and/or down the road, a fourth elementary school maybe in 10 years or so. So obviously, that would have another significant impact on what it is you presented here tonight, right?
It would.
I just don't want us to be short-sighted and not think about that as well.
Yeah, we weren't going to discount that. I think that as Dr. Benson indicated, the numbers that were put in the CIP are really not a very strong number. It was based on some other information. So I think that number goes way down. I think it was 16.9 that was included in your future CIP list. And so I think that number goes way down. But, and I don't know if that's something that they can get us some more firm number that we could include in this, because we do know that that's an important project for the school system and for you all. So, you know, I guess we'll defer to Dr. Benson if they can get us a more firm number.
And it might be, as a follow-up, it might be hard to tell, given we don't exact, I mean, we have some population estimates from Cooper Center and other places, but we don't know exactly what impact the new bridge is gonna have on that. We could be busting at the seams here pretty quickly, so. All right, thanks very much. Thanks for coming out.
So Collins?
Thanks for coming out, Kyle. Nice to see you again. So the... You based this on a 35% increase in assessed value of real estate?
Roughly speaking, that's right.
So that would, would that be at the current rate of 73 cents?
No, well, the values, the values are the values, right? So those values, which we have no control over, those, as we understand it in the aggregator, are up about 35%. I think the rate itself is really, that's what, you know, that's sort of the hard job you have over the next couple of weeks. I think, I don't know if Chris or Donna want to talk about with the equalized raters, or if that's part of the discussion.
And I think that what the penny, what you were representing is that the value of the penny under, previously was gonna generate 275,000. The value in a reset, reevaluation, or a recessed, reassessed world is generating you 390. Is that how I interpret it?
That's right.
And that's, I think, what he was saying.
Say that one again.
Okay. I'm gonna let the expert go ahead and explain why the difference of what a penny can generate.
Yeah.
So a penny could generate last year's budget, 247,000.
275,000.
That's budget 275?
Yes.
Roughly speaking, that's right. And a penny can now generate round numbers about 390,000 or thereabouts. Donna can correct me if we're a little off there, but plus or minus, it seems like that's about in the right range.
If we stay at the current tax assessment, tax rate that we currently have.
Yeah, and so each penny, so if you're at 73 cents right now, if memory is serving me correctly, so that's 73 pennies, if you will, used to, 73 pennies times basically 275,000 was your revenue generating capacity. If you were to keep the tax rate at the 73 pennies, you'd be going 73 pennies times something more like 390,000. And so because the underlying value of the properties is greater, there's greater revenue generating capacity from it. And I think what's interesting about this time period relative to past reassessments, and it's more challenging, is the inflationary environment. Past reassessments, you've been able to kind of work through that, you and past boards. And inflation's been pretty tame for about, you know, arguably 40 years, especially the last 10 or so years. And so the uptick in values, which was felt in the underlying value of homes and buildings, et cetera, was increasing arguably when you did a reassessment, by faster than inflation. And so there was an ability to kind of think about that as your revenue generating capacity was growing faster than your operating budget. Now, what we see facing with some uncertain information is the fact that inflation has kicked up so high that the pressure on the operating budget and the capital budget, it's really on both sides, is greater than it's bad been in past reassessment cycles. And so one way to think about it, at least we do, and you may agree or disagree, is these reassessments is sort of a local government's way to adjust for inflation, right? So the cost of running the county, the cost of the operational side of things, the cost of paying for the capital projects is impacted in some way by, you know, the overall inflation in the environment. And that's grown a whole lot more in the last 12 or 24 months than I think anybody saw. But at the same time, your revenue generating capacity has also grown. So more so than in past years, a reassessment and reevaluation tends to be a local government's way to, one of the ways, not the only way, but one of the ways to kind of help adjust the revenue side for the fact that the cost of running the operations and capital side of the business is more expensive, no fault of your own. It's just the way the world is going right now.
So the reassessments, if it was kept at 73 cents, what would be the dollar amount of revenue?
I believe it is about 28, 28, 428. Is that what you have?
So for the real estate taxes, what it would be, if we left it at the 73 cents, it would generate 28,806,028 in revenue. That was in those revenue spreadsheets that I provided to all you last week. And after Mr. La completes his, I've got some numbers that I've run to fill up and share with you.
Thank you.
Citizen Board, questions?
I have one. The annual cash funding of capital projects, the 2.1 million, I'm just curious where that number comes from. Is that from history? Is that from some formula?
It's a...
2.1 million?
Yeah, we tried to come up with a round number, and it's really for Chris and Donna to tell exactly what the right number is. We've kind of tried to average the non-debt-funded needs, kind of requests, something that gets some requests in the CIP over time. It tends to be things like ambulance replacements, school buses, sheriff's vehicles, things like roofs, HVAC, et cetera, et cetera. So we try to just kind of take a rough average of, it's not gonna be 2.1 million every year, but tried to kind of get to a level annual amount just for purposes of, it's a little easier to run and show than each individual year. So it's not intended to tie exactly to the series of specific projects.
Got it. Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but thank you very much for all that information, a lot of big numbers. Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, absolutely. Good to see you, and it was a lot of tough decisions. So as always, we're happy to amend, change, revise as new information comes along.
And if I can just recap, as Kyle indicated, this is preliminary information. It is meant to be information for you to factor in when you're making those decisions about where things affect the operating budget and also the reality that you have these major capital projects that we all would like to see advance, that you're gonna have to include some kind of source there or those projects go away. I will say that the reason why he broke it up into a case one and a case two is without a doubt, you've got to fund the gap on the courthouse. And two, the radio system has been presented, and I think I would agree with Sheriff Giles and Deputy Chief Basham, it's a fundamentally important project as well. So you've got those two that are most important. Not discounting the fire station, obviously, that has been a long-term project as well. So that just gives you that, you know, that case two becomes that, okay, is that one that has to be done immediately? I, you know, I think that's a discussion that we can have. But it does show you, this is what you gotta deal with. You gotta, the reality is, you've got a certain amount of revenue that you can get, but you also have these projects. And we just wanted to put those in front of you. We know we do the CIP a little later. You are gonna have to deal with the courthouse situation here fairly quickly, because that project is moving and we don't want to delay that project. And I know that, you know, this gap is attributed to, you know, as Kyle indicated. I mean, the market and the whole pricing structure in construction is just way out of whack. And we all know that. And, you know, I imagine if you're in the home building business or office building business, it's crazy. So just wanted to get this to you all.
Thank you.
So if I may proceed.
Go right ahead.
So what this is, and I had worked on it earlier today, and then I changed some numbers around tonight while Dr. Benson was presenting. And so on the left are the four different... On the left is the four different scenarios that I gave you all last week in the revenue spreadsheet. And this just pulls out what the real estate tax would be, and at those different tax amounts, what the projected general fund revenue would be. And then over here, and it does say Governors presented. But what this is, is this takes what Dr. Benson on, I forget what page it was, I think, of his presentation, having the 21,194,106, along with the county request, that comes to a general fund request of 60,106,708. So if we leave the real estate tax at 73 cents, that leaves an additional 2.1 million in a surplus, per se, to go towards capital funding. And that's why we wanted Kyle to come tonight and present, so you could see what we would need for these projects versus what we have and what we... So showing this, you know, we do have, or you all have some hard decisions to make concerning everyone's budget requests and also as far as the reassessment and whether we stabilize or if we... And so I did look more into the law concerning the reassessment. And you were correct about the 1%, but if you advertise a public hearing within, you have to advertise it 30 days in advance, you can adopt a different, you know, you don't have to do an equalized tax rate. You can adopt a tax rate, but you have to hold a public hearing and it has to be advertised 30 days in advance. And so at this timeframe, of course, we're still unsure, like I mentioned to you all, we, last week, that I had used a 3% estimate on the comp board. I'm still waiting for information from the Commissioner of Revenues Office. And as Dr. Benson mentioned, we still don't know what the state's revenue picture is gonna be. But these are kind of the numbers that I ran and thought that you would, might want to see as you, we move forward in this process. And knowing that it's the end of March now, and so any decisions that are made, we need to move pretty quickly if we're going to adopt a higher tax amount for a public hearing, because we're gonna run out of time. So, you know, if we, of course, I don't expect anyone to make any decision tonight on it, but we would need to have a public hearing on this no later than May 10th in order to get the budget approved by when we are required by law to have the schools' budget back to them. And we cannot have, the public hearing cannot be a part of the budget public hearing, although Mr. Cusenberry did look back when y'all did this, I think it was in fiscal year 14, 15. And you could have two public hearings on the same night, but they have to be separate and advertised separately.
So you said the public hearing would have to be at the latest, May 10th?
Well, that week of May 10th, because the budget, it needs to be approved and back to the schools by May 15th.
Which means then the advertisement for 30 days back would have to be...
Like next week.
Yes, that's where I was kind of going with it.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that we all wear that. So that is really quick. It's really soon.
And we will, I guess I need to ask Ms. Hall on this, but, you know, the question then becomes, you know, could you do something at your next regular board of supervisors meeting where you set a public hearing, but you don't have a specific rate? And I can, we can also ask Ms. Lackey about that, to weigh in on that. Because, you know, I don't want to certainly, you know, we can't force you guys into a situation, but I mean, that's the kind of the reality that we're dealing with is that. And if there's a way that we can just set a public hearing and then that information is advertised once you've arrived at that decision, then...
Mr. Chair, so my recollection from last budget season is we can always set a rate even or high, and then we can have the public hearing. We can't set it any higher than what we did, the tax rate, than what we advertised, but we can always lower it after the fact. So it, I mean, we may not have as big a time crunch as we're thinking, because we do have the opportunity to do that per the code.
So you would, you could have, you could set the public hearing, you could go to your, you know, make an action at the next board of supervisors meeting to set a public hearing for like the, the, the eleventh of May. But what you're saying is you could, you don't necessarily have to have the rate that you're ultimately gonna adopt. You just can't go higher. You would, you could set it for a hundred, for a dollar. And then, you know, I know, I'm just saying, and then you come down at your, once you've had the chance to do that.
We can advertise at a certain rate and we can't go higher than what was advertised, but we can always bring it down after advertisement and public hearing. And that's kind of part of the process to hear from the public. Yeah.
The other option would also be to hold a special meeting of the board of supervisors on like the twelfth of April or, or the, maybe even next week sometime when you've had a chance to look at some other reductions to the budget and consider some of the information that was presented to you tonight. If we had to, that we could get it in. And then you've got your thirty days. So that's another option. Or, you know, set the, your next budget meeting, which is scheduled for the sixth, make it, make it an actual board of supervisors regular called meal, meeting and, uh, do it then, you know, debate it, debate what you want to do, talk about it. And then come together as a decision what you want to do with the rate. And then we have the public hearing that we are in compliance with that. Would that work?
So we're still planning to have another budget work session next Wednesday?
That, well, we had, we've kind of blocked out our Wednesday night, so I was assuming that you guys might too, but
Yes.
if you don't have a need to it, but it sounds like you might have a need to at least have some discussion.
I think we do personally. So I would like to have that, that meeting on the sixth and then, uh, I would imagine that some, we would have to come out of that with an advertisement at least or a rate for advertisement. So. And, yeah, I don't want to speak for my colleagues though, but that, that's what I would advocate for.
Mr. Chair, uh, I guess we'd also have to make some decisions on what we would want, if we wanted to cut things from that meeting also.
And we'll, you know, we'll have a list. And I, I think what, what Mr. Stonehill had asked, the chair had asked is that if you guys had something, if you had some lists rather than us going, sharing it over a couple of meetings, it was, if you have something that is just definitely, you know, on your list, then give it to us. We put it all together. We talk about it. You guys all have to obviously agree on some things, but, um, you know, that was kind of what I think your intention was with that. So it wasn't meant to advance anything or, you know, and I, I know the, the points everybody made. They wanted to wait and see how some of these other budget presentations went, particularly the schools, before they came up with any list. But, you know, it'd be helpful if you get it to us before, before the sixth, but we'll go to work on the list that we, you know, are assembling, obviously, because we know there's, there's things that have, have to come out. So.
Mr. Collins?
So can we get your list before the sixth?
Uh, we can get to work on it. Yeah. I mean, I, yeah, and we'll have a, we'll have a presentation ready to go. So, yeah, we can do that.
So today's the thirtieth. When, when you, when do you reckon we can?
Uh, what I, I, I'll get with Ms. Hahn, but I, I can, we can definitely have it to you. You meet regularly on the fifth. We can have it to you hopefully before the fifth. Give us this week to work on that and then we'll get it out, if that's okay.
And if you, you know, if you have things that you know for sure that you're not interested in, you know, the school board people are here, like purple school buses you don't want in the budget, you know, send it to them so they can start, you know, putting things together to take things out.
But we, we don't send anything to the school board. They make their own decisions on.
I, I'm just using that as, as an example. I mean, if there are things that you have seen over the last, you know, two months that you, you'd like to see taken out of a budget, email it to them so they can kind of start compiling a, a list of things. You know, if there are other things that you have questions about or whatever, obviously, we'll, you know, we'll talk about that on the sixth. Scott, anything?
Sure.
Ms. Hahn, I really appreciate the, the spreadsheet. Um, so the projected general fund revenues uh, would show how much we'd be looking to bring in total
That, that's bringing it.
across all the different.
That's with all of the different revenue sources, of course, like I said last week and earlier, that some of those are just assumptions at this point because they're estimates.
Dragging.
Because we, again, I don't have numbers from the Commissioner of Revenues Office. We don't have the comp board numbers, but I did estimate a three percent. I did estimate some increases for the community development.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, just this week, we also got some updated fees for, um, parks and rec as well as community development, a couple of things that were left off of their fee schedules. So I didn't know if you all wanted to see those at the next meeting too. And I could try to factor those in into the revenue scenario as well.
Okay. Um, I'm also assuming that doesn't include the state allocation for school funding.
So the state allocation is separate from the general fund that goes down into their piece. And the general fund is just the county's portion that we, um, provide to the schools.
So that is showing, and I, I don't know off the top of my head, because we have the Senate, we have the House, um, recommendation. What was the governor's?
So-
What would be the delta then for, for the, the locality, um, contribution in order to meet wholly what the school's request is based off the governor's?
Well, based off the governor's projected, there is a required local effort in that piece and, um, the ethical, which in, in the governor's calcul- calculation tool for that, the, um, amount for county is fifteen million, three thirty-six, based on the SOQ position.
I, I understand that, but I, I, my understanding would be for the expenditures, oh, that's just showing what-
That, that, the expenditures, what I have there is, I've added, that's general fund plus the schools, what Dr. Benson had in his presentation tonight as to what he was the, um, on page, page twelve of Dr. Benson's presentation, where he said that, um, their funding needed to meet thirty-eight percent of their operating budget is twenty-one million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and six.
So that would show, that, and that wouldn't necessarily be what the school's request is.
That's-
That would just be the percentage.
The request to the county.
Correct.
If, am I speaking correctly?
Thank you for a chance to clarify. No, actually, the, the amount needed locally.
Variable based off the-
Right.
I understand that, but yes.
It's not indicated by the point three eight.
I understand that.
If I'm correct, if I'm understanding, you took the amount-
There's twenty-one.
Three eight.
Mm-hmm.
No, that's, that's simply a, um, to, to build some context with prior years. That's what that number, um, was included in the presentation for. The real number to make our budget whole, you'll see, can be found on, I guess it's page-
Eight.
Yeah, that's probably right. This.
It has, you have the House and the Senate, yeah.
That one. That would be the more accurate.
So-
Which one? The-
Oh, no.
That's what we don't know. It could be wherever it lands.
So that's why I just used that number from page twelve.
Yeah. So I think what Ms. Hahn's saying, she used that number as a proxy.
Okay.
What may be, but we don't know until they-
So you used a placeholder of twenty-one million, one hundred and ninety, so just a hair over twenty-one million. And it could be that, it could be less, it could be more to meet wholly what the school's request is based off what the state does.
And, and two, I'm, I'm a little bit-
Essentially, we don't know.
Yes. So, well, and the one thing, the big caveat, as Dr. Benson had mentioned earlier, is that two point four million that is in the Senate budget. And so the twenty million that you've got here, local revenue, and so I'm just wondering, is, is that kind of like a wash where we up our amount to cover the two point four and then you all return the two point four to go towards that payment?
That would have to be the presumption. And that's why I warned, you know, in doing that, that there be a common understanding that that's what's happening, given that that part of that, that two point four may or may not be there after two years. But again, I don't know conceptually that that's gonna survive the budget.
I understand. So, and I, I appreciate that.
So, and then worst case scenario, you're gonna be asking for the twenty-three million, five seventy-four. So then that increases the numbers that are on the spreadsheet that Krista had up.
Well, no, I don't know that that's worst case scenario. I, I guess that's the point is we just don't know until the state adopts a budget and we get a new calc tool, um, we just don't know what our local revenue is gonna be. I knew that would be the case. That's why we tried to delay as long as we could, but I'm, I'm sorry that it's just an unknown.
That's okay. Could we go back to Ms. Hahn's spreadsheet real quick then?
But regardless, you're, you're basing your budget on fifty five million, seven seventy-three, nine sixty-five for your total expenditures.
The expenditure side?
Fifty-seven.
Thank you. I don't have my-
On page eleven.
Yep, fifty, um, sorry.
That's different than the number on page eight, which shows fifty-seven million.
Donna, help me again. Let me go to the budget book itself. Take that number. So the two fifty total is fifty-five million, seven seventy-three.
So your fifty-seven includes your, um, grant funding as well.
Two fifty-two funding, maybe where you're getting the difference in. Yeah, that's just, what you're looking at on PowerPoint is two fifty, the operating. The other is the grant, the two fifty-two funding. That's the difference.
So would the grants be included in the total revenues then? Or would that be a separate, so that would not?
No, because that's something that comes directly to the school.
So it would be based off of the fifty-five, seven, seven, three in order to, so that's, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking this through. So please, if you guys don't mind, bear with me for a moment. And you used, Ms. Hahn, you used two point, or twenty-one point one, or twenty-one point two million for the school contribution from the locality for expenditures.
So if we were, and I'll get Chris to, to make some changes so you can see what those differences would be. So page eleven, are those accurate numbers represented what, based on those two different, um, scenarios, the House shows that you would request twenty-three million, five seventy-eight, two thirty-four?
And the Senate, the twenty-four, three, six?
So Chris, if you'd go back to my spreadsheet? Change that, um, for the sixty million right there. Change that to sixty-two million, um, four hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six. And so you see even at the seventy-three cents with everything that the, if-
We were to fund everything as requested. It would still require a tax increase above the seventy-three cents in order to meet-
And we still wouldn't have enough.
That is saying.
We would be two hundred and sixty-two thousand.
We'd have to raise another cent beyond that in order to meet every request.
Right. And then if it, if the, under the Senate budget, if you would-
Fair enough, yes.
Um, so, um,
Be about?
If you would change that number to sixty thousand, oh, no, fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine.
Fifty-nine million.
Yes, thank you. Fifty-nine million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven. But put that up in the top number. There you have a surplus of two point eight million.
Okay.
So it's, you know-
I got you. And until we know the state budget, I, I appreciate, I just was trying to grasp based off the requests, um, what, what the impact would be on, on that tax rate and to better understand what, just to give me more information. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? All right. So we also have, so we got a, a budget meeting is gonna be on the, the sixth, five thirty. Okay. Um, so I guess we are done for this evening. Do we have a motion?
I move to adjourn until Tuesday, March fifth at six thirty PM in the boardroom.
Second.
Ap- ape?
Want to amend that?
I move to amend to, uh, adjourn until April fifth at six thirty PM in the boardroom.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned.